I'd like to call the March 19th, 2019 meeting of the Buncombe County Commission to Order. Thank you all for being with us this evening. Let's begin our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise and join us in the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Between now and our next meeting of the county commission, we will celebrate the first official day of spring. As we see around us the first wildflowers beginning to bloom and hear the first spring peepers along the creeks announcing their presence in the evening, let us take a moment of silence to remember and reflect on how truly fortunate we are to live in this beautiful part of the world. Let us be thankful that we live amongst these mountains that provide us with clean air, clean water, an abundance of native wildlife and natural resources, places for exploration and reflection, and natural beauty that inspires us every day. Let us be thankful for this creation that we are part of and for those who have come before us who have been good stewards of these mountains. Please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. And again, welcome to the March 19th meeting of the county commission. Before we get started, I'd like to announce that we have parking validation for folks who are at the meeting this evening. So if you use the county's parking deck next door or the transit system, you can have your ticket validated by the officers who are with us. So see them on the way out. That validation is for today's ticket only. Let me read the ethics reminder to the board. "In accordance with the Code of Ethics adopted by the Board, all county commissioners have a duty to obey all applicable laws regarding official actions, to uphold the integrity and independence of the office, to avoid impropriety in the exercise of official duties, to faithfully perform the duties of the office, and to conduct the affairs of the governing Board in an open and public manner. Is there any item on the agenda, the outcome of which would have a direct, substantial, and readily identifiable financial impact for any Board member? Also, does any Board member have a financial interest in any public contract coming before the Board today? Seeing none, all Board members have a duty and obligation to vote on any matters voted on by the Board at this meeting." Before we get started, I'd like to acknowledge we have former Representative Ray Rapp with us in the commission meeting this evening. Representative Rapp, great to see you and thank you for being with us. We'll be talking about an issue that he might be helping us out on later in the meeting this evening. Okay. And also, if you have a cellphone, please turn it off or put it on mute. We come to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda and to follow the remainder of the agenda as published?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Ms. Pender, is there anything under the county manager's report for this meeting?
Yes, sir. Just two quick items. Coming from a Health and Human Services group, the county health rankings were released today. I think you saw that press release. The rankings offer a snapshot of how healthy a community is and how healthy they are likely to be in the future. Buncombe County maintains its ranking of 14th in the state. So there are some items that were well significantly improved and some that had not. We'll continue to work on that over the next year. The second item is our Crime Victims' Rights Week. There's a meet and greet drop-in event on Tuesday, April 9th, from 8:30 to 10. It's here on the first floor conference room at 200 Coller Street.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. All right. We have, under Old Business Resolution, authorizing a grant of franchise for emergency medical and convalescent transport for Medical Emergency Ambulance Transport Incorporated. And Mike Frue will present this item.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, two weeks ago, this Board approved the grant of a franchise for MEDIC, which is an assumed name for Medical Emergency Ambulance Transport. The Board directed that, go ahead and put that resolution into writing and also to work on the draft of an agreement with Mr. Tully. He's the principal of MEDIC and his attorney. And Mr. Tully are here today. They've agreed to all the terms and conditions of the agreement we put together, tried to highlight elements of the ordinance in particular for the granting of such a franchise, insurance and hold harmless. Also, recall the Board wanted to make sure that the agreement would take care of inspections, and that's provided for in the agreement. They can be at any time. They can be monthly and financials will be included. This is for a one-year term. It includes assistance from the IT department to program and have installed radios and elements necessary for the mobile computer-aided dispatch system. The agreement calls for MEDIC to have available two ambulances between 7:00 a.m. and 9:00 p.m., seven days a week, 24 hours a day, or between those hours, 7:00 and 9:00, 7:00, 8:00 a.m. and 9:00 p.m., seven days a week, and then one ambulance during off-hours for emergency and convalescent transport between 9:00 p.m. and 7:00 a.m. If there's any questions regarding the particulars of the contract, I'd be glad to answer those questions. Also, the only element that's not really set forth in the agreement because it's an ordinance matter would be proposed schedule of fees and charges. I checked with the attorney, Mr. Jones and Mr. Tully earlier today, and they do have a schedule of fees and charges, and those are identical to our EMS charges that are currently in place. So everything appears ready for this Board to approve this resolution and to implement this agreement.
So there's a resolution and the agreement. Do we need to, but they're separate, right? There's a resolution and an agreement, or I want to be clear on exactly what needs to be adopted?
Well, the resolution wasn't prepared before this Board a couple of weeks ago. So I think the best thing to do would be for the Board to approve the resolution. And the resolution also asked that we draft the agreement with the Board. So the agreement itself doesn't need a vote, but the resolution does.
Okay. Although, didn't we vote on that resolution at the last meeting?
I had a copy of the essential elements for the grant of a franchise handy, and I read it to the Board, and the Board made that motion, I believe Commissioner Belcher made the motion, and approved it. We just didn't have the writing, the technical elements of the resolution, ready. But it is available in the agenda packet now. And Mr. Jordan was able to put that into the minutes.
Okay. But you don't, why shouldn't we approve the agreement as well?
It's not wrong to do so. It's just that the resolution and the direction of the Board two weeks ago was to instruct staff to work with Mr. Tully and his lawyers to draft the agreement.
Why don't we approve them both, just so we make sure it's all?
Because I think-
It's certainly not wrong.
I think the expectation of the motion was that both, that we would approve an agreement. So I think approving them both together would work.
Okay. And small side note, before we move on to this, I actually neglected one item on the agenda before this one. So as soon as we're done with this item, we're going to go back to the Buncombe County Schools Do the Right Thing item. So I apologize for that, but it's just an oversight on my point, on my part. So we'll come back to that after we vote on this item. Is there any questions or discussion from the commission? Or is there a motion?
Move approval?
Second.
All right, there's a motion in the second. Are there any members of the public who wish to comment on the motion? Yes, sir.
Hello. My name is Dan Friday. I'm a resident of Buncombe County. I talked to you all last meeting we had this thing. You all know my concerns. They're still the same. I feel like Mr. Tully in MEDIC has lied to you all these, they came out and I think in their application, they say they have seven ambulances. According to the stuff that was put online by Buncombe County, I think they have six, and then one of them is a pickup truck. I don't think you can really work a code in the back of a pickup truck. So I'm thinking the staff level is actually five ambulances and a pickup truck. And then furthermore, I know that the stuff posted online said in the contract that they would be required to meet all the same criteria that our local fire departments meet. I hope that means that they're running a paramedic on every one of these vehicles that you all are letting them run in our district. And third, I mean, I just, I don't know. I'm just disappointed with this whole Board and how they're, oh, not with the whole Board, actually, with particularly three members of the Board and the one member that's being roped into this. But thank you very much for listening to my comments.
All right, thank you. Any other members of the public who wish to comment on the motion? All right. We've discussed this at length, so if there's no other comments, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, aye.
Aye.
All right. Motion passes four to three. Okay. Now, let's go back to the good news. And we have Eric Grant with the Buncombe County Schools who was with us here to talk about the Do the Right Thing Middle School Writing Challenge with the Buncombe County Schools. So Eric, thanks for being with us and please coming up and tell us about what's going on.
Good evening. My name is Eric Grant. I am the Buncombe County Schools English Language Arts and Social Studies Curriculum Specialist for secondary schools, so middle and high schools in Buncombe County Schools. And so watching the legislative process occur in front of me was no problem. As a social studies specialist, I enjoy watching that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, for this opportunity to discuss Do the Right Thing Middle School Writing Challenge. And I also want to say that I'm, as part of my presentation, I'm inviting you to be participants in the Do the Right Thing Challenge. I think I ask for these to be placed at you, and there's an invitation to participate in this year's challenge. I'll give you a brief history on Do the Right Thing. The Do the Right Thing Writing Challenge is a collaborative effort of Buncombe County Schools, Asheville City Schools, the National Campaign to Stop Violence, the Asheville Police Department, the Buncombe County Sheriff's Department, and numerous other local partners. And this provides an opportunity for us to ask our students to do what we really always want our students to do, is to be leaders and agents of change in our community. Through this initiative, students are asked to examine how youth violence and violence in general has affected their lives, to talk about some of the causes of violence, and then to talk about some solutions to violence. Last year, we had about 1,000 Buncombe County and Asheville City Schools write on this prompt, and we had about 500 enter to be in the competition for Do the Right Thing. Twelve of those students, six from each school district, were selected as finalists. And then two of those, one from Buncombe County and one from Asheville City Schools, represented Asheville-Buncombe Do the Right Thing in Washington, D.C., where their writing has been published in the Library of Congress. One of those students is with us tonight, and he'll share in a couple of minutes the poem that won. This project has power to provide voice to our youth. And then I think if you'll remember last year about this time, we were dealing with quite a bit of national and local issues around violence. So these writings really provide like a unique and really poignant glimpse into what our students and what our youth are experiencing and how that shapes them. And this has been noted by many of their teachers, that this project enables them to really get to know their kids in a way that they wouldn't otherwise as they show up in their classes every day. Of course, for me to explain all of this is one thing, but to hear it from the students themselves is obviously completely different. As I said, in a few minutes, you'll get to hear Alex Gast read and recite his winning poem, "7,000 Pairs of Shoes on the Capitol Lawn." But I also want to say, on Thursday and Friday of this week, you'll have an opportunity to read and actually score some of our students' work if you have time. We're meeting at the Asheville City Schools School Board Building from 8:30 to 11:00 Thursday morning from, and this is written down, actually, if you go to the link, you can find this, from 12:30 to 3:00 p.m. on Thursday afternoon. And again, 8:30 to 11:00 on Friday morning to read and actually judge these writings and select the finalists and select the winner. If you cannot make it for a whole two-and-a-half-hour time block, that is completely fine. I put my card on there with my email address, and then there's a link and an email address to get more information. We would love to have you just get a chance to see what these students have to write. But without further ado, I'd like to introduce Mr. Alex Gast, who is currently a ninth-grade student at Nesbit Discovery Academy and was last year at North Buncombe Middle School when he wrote this. He's graciously offered to share his work with us and then to talk a little bit about the experience that he's had, and then we'll have time for questions at the end. So Alex, the floor is yours.
Welcome.
Thanks for being here. Good afternoon. I'm Alex Gast. This is "7,000 Pairs of Shoes on the Capitol Lawn." 2012, the 14th of December, a day that I'm sure we all remember. Twenty-six people fall down dead. The once beautiful campus is now stained red. The Connecticut Academy, called Sandy Hook School, just entered a nightmare, scary and cruel. Why would a man do this? Was he mentally ill, addicted to the bottle, the trigger, or pill? We will never truly know the reasons. They shift and change and grow like the seasons. We can offer support all we desire, but change can't be made without fighting the fire. Sandy Hook was not the last. Unspeakable violence is not in the past. 14,000 shoes on the Capitol lawn. They will never truly be gone. Each pair represents a child that was killed. They were shot and their blood was spilled. When will adults take control? Can't they see the deadly toll? The nation's young are paying the price. All the kids in the world will not suffice. They will keep shooting. We will never be at ease. The pain will spread like a massive disease. Sympathetic thoughts are not enough. It's time to speak out and time to stand up. Violence will never end unless we fight. We have to take a stand for what is right. Children are dying. The nation's crying, but river of tears won't bring a new dawn. How many shoes have to be laid on the Capitol lawn before the nation will stand? And tomorrow, when I awake, attending school is a gamble I take. We are not safe with these weapons out there. Why doesn't authority even care? The streets need to be swept clean from guns. How many more of your daughters and your sons must take their last breath, fall and die before this country will rise? Thank you very much. Thank you.
Alex, thank you so much. That was truly brilliant and very relevant, of course, as well. So thank you, thank you so much for being with us and sharing that. Do people, or does anyone else you'd like to tell us about the process of going through this Do the Right Thing?
Yes, actually. It was presented by my English teacher as an assignment, actually. So it was exciting just to, it's a lot of buzz at first, like this competition and winning and all that stuff was, but it was really just talk then. And then you enter and you work on your essay, and it's all independent. And you submit, and it was just a lot of waiting. I kind of forgot about it, and I got a letter.
Do, do you do a lot of writing as a student or personally before you got involved in this program?
I do, actually, yes. I've always been an English guy, but-
Well, it shows you're very talented, and it was real, I can see why your poem was right at the top. It was great.
Thank you so much. It means a lot.
Eric, thank you for coming to talk to us about this great program. Anything else you'd like for us to know?
Just to keep in mind that Thursday and Friday, you'll get a chance to read all kinds of perspectives and voices if you have some time to make it out to Asheville City Schools' School Board Building. We'd love to have you. Thank you.
Is that a drop-in or is it pre-register?
For you guys, it's a drop-in. Feel free to come by, and we'll be glad to sit you at a table and get you to read some. If you can, there is registration on the link if you want, if you can give a two-and-a-half hour time. There's some spots there to register. But if you can't make it for the whole time, we would love to have you just get a feel for what's happening.
Thank you. I would just like to thank you all for bringing attention to this incredibly serious issue. In 1993, I was a victim of school violence in southern West Virginia prior to school violence being the issue that it is today. So thank you for your work that you're doing. That is incredible to someone who has been there at the age of 16. Thank you.
Thanks for sharing that. And it is collaborative with Asheville City Schools, so it's one of the, really, I think, one of the best collaborations we have between the county and the city that involves students. So really support all of us by participating. Thank you.
All right. Thanks again, Alex. Thank you, Eric. Okay. All right, we now come to New Business. And the first item is a resolution setting the number of members on the Buncombe County Health and Human Services Board.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. This item and the next item are really just a bit of shopkeeping for this Board. It was back in 2012 that this Board commissioned, formed the Integrated Health and Human Services Board. In January of the following year, 2013, this Board set 19 members as the number of members plus three community members. And it's been operating with a few extra ad hoc members. We just wanted to bring this all online. The statute actually says that that Board shall be composed of no more than 25 members. We would like this Board to approve the resolution to create the Health and Human Services Board to be not more than 25 members and to make that retroactive to January 2013. There's no plans to extend, to make more members at this time. And in fact, any recommendation by this Board or approval of this Board for members of the integrated Board comes from a recommendation of the integrated Board for new membership and a vote by this Board to make them members.
All right. Is there a motion?
Second.
Are there any members of the public who wish to comment on the motion? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Next, we have a resolution setting commission pre-meeting and regular meeting schedule for the remainder of this year.
And yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, this, again, is just housekeeping. We've, for some period of time, had a regular meeting, the first and third Tuesday of the month at 5:00 p.m. So under the new county manager, she instituted a pre-meeting, which was at noon today. That noon meeting today of the Board was by special meeting. And by passing this resolution, this Board is setting noon on the first and third Tuesdays of each month as a pre-meeting and 5:00 o'clock as the regular meeting of the Board on the first and third Tuesdays of the month. All rules for special meetings or emergency meetings will remain the same.
Great. Is there a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
Are there any members of the public who wish to comment on the motion? All right. I just want to make one comment, which is that I really appreciate this idea coming forward. We had our first of these meetings today, and I thought it was great. And so if you're interested in county commission work and the business of Buncombe County, I would encourage folks to consider, these will all be open public meetings. We will not be taking any votes at the noon meetings, but we will be discussing upcoming issues that are on the commission agenda. So we encourage folks to join us for those meetings as well. But I think this will be a real productive way that folks can kind of see what we're planning on talking about that evening or in future commission meetings as well. I think this will be a place where a lot of ideas get surfaced and discussed that are not immediately ready to be voted on. But we want to make sure all that work is done in an open, public manner. And this is a place where, along with the regular meetings at 5:00, that'll happen, so.
We do have public comment.
There will not be public comment regularly scheduled at the noon meetings.
That's right.
Because we're not voting, we're not voting, sorry. Yeah, that's right. We do have, we also had today, another of our, first of the new Subcommittee, the Affordable Housing Subcommittee of the County Commission, also met today at 2:00. Great, well-attended meeting. So we're trying to put together some new structures to encourage public engagement with the County Commission and to kind of take a deeper dive on some of the issues the commission is working on. So if there's no other comments on the motion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you, Mr. Frue.
Yeah, one comment, I need to, what was great about this, where we usually have two, three on three, is we probably saved 25, sorry about that. We probably saved 25 to 30 hours of staff time today of complying this all in here. So I'm really proud of what you put together here.
Okay. We have a couple of capital-related issues. So the first is approval of AB Tech FY19 Capital Plan Maintenance, CMAR Construction Contract, and Pat Freeman King is going to present this?
Good evening. My name is Pamela Freeman King. I'm the Interim General Services Director. I have four construction-related capital contracts to present this evening, and I plan to present these one at a time unless you would like those presented in a different manner.
Could you pull your microphone closer, please, so the people can hear?
I need to repeat what I just said.
I think you're fine, but yeah, just speaking the mic.
One at a time?
Please present it as you suggested.
So are we voting on this?
We are going to be voting on this tonight, yeah.
So are we voting on them individually or all at one time?
My suggestion would be, were you gonna, you're going to present on the AB Tech Capital Plan and then also, you're also going to present on the three county building exterior remediation projects. I would suggest, let's cover the AB Tech item first, and then we'll vote on that, and then we'll go to the other two county building projects.
So the AB Tech Capital Plan Maintenance, this is Phase Two that we have a contract for. This will cover four buildings at AB Tech, the Birch, Coman, Simpson, and Locke Library. Those repairs range from electrical and HVAC upgrades to roof replacement and exterior repair. This contract is for $2,356,838. The construction management firm, James Arvenoy and Sons Construction, has received bids and plan to begin construction on Phase Two project. The bids received and the guaranteed maximum price are within the approved budget, and we ask that you approve this contract to proceed with the project.
All right, thank you.
So I got a question, and I hope it doesn't put anybody on the spot, but when we approved our procurement manual, and it had certain requirements in there for, you know, going out to bid, could somebody comment on, you know, that this met the requirements?
It did. We had a pre-construction meeting that we advertised, or a pre-application, I'm sorry, not a pre-construction, a pre-application meeting that we advertised. We only had one firm that showed up, and then that one firm submitted their application, and we graded it. They were qualified, so we chose them.
Okay. All right, thanks.
So just following up on that, is there, so I'm glad we, you know, we did the process as we have in the policy. Any insights into why only one firm applied?
We had at the same-
I know that it's a busy time. There's a lot of work out there in the construction industry. So, but is that, is that why? Or for, it's a relatively large contract. You would think there might be more interest from other companies.
It is. And I think that is part of the reason that only one firm showed up for the pre-application. But also, Arvenoy had done Phase One, and I think other construction companies realized they had done Phase One. So they were busy. They didn't send anyone to the meeting. We also advertised at the same time for the three building exterior projects. We have four construction management firms show up for that pre-application meeting, and again, only one submitted their application. There is a lot of construction work- There is a lot of construction work out there right now.
Okay, all right. Is there a motion to approve the CMAR Construction Contract for the ABTEC project?
Second.
Any members of the public who wish to comment on the motion? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
So, there are two separate contracts for the three building exterior remediation, repair, and cleaning to approve or to ask to be approved tonight. This project covers three county buildings, the county courthouse, which those repairs include tuck points, window seals, control joint rework, and brick replacement. The county administration building is curtain wall repair. The detention center is cleaning and vertical expansion joint rework. There is a mistake in the packet from James Arvenoy where they gave their proposal fee. Their numbers do not add up, well, they add up, they just transposed $783. They put it on the courthouse project, but it's actually on the detention center. So, the numbers you have on your information sheet are correct, but the Arvenoy letter does have a typo.
But what we're voting on is correct?
Correct. Buncombe County advertised the RFQ for construction manager, and applications were received in August. As I mentioned earlier, four construction firms attended the pre-application conference, but only one submitted an application. Arvenoy is fully qualified CM for this project. Their contract that they have proposed is $94,453, and we ask that their contract be approved to continue the project.
Okay, so we'll make sure I'm again clear on exactly what needs to get voted on here. We need an approval of the Arvenoy pre-construction agreement. We need approval of the SKA Engineered Design Contract. And then, we're also going to have, need a separate approval for the 50 Cox Avenue Single Prime Construction Contract.
Correct.
Okay. Well, let's go ahead and do the other two, and then we'll come to that one last.
Let me ask a question on that. This is, so this is $94,000. However, it's approving six, we're going to be doing $6.5 million in work?
Correct.
And so, how is that, or how was that budgeted for, $6.5 million?
The three projects were approved separately. We received cost estimates for those three projects. And they were approved approximately six to nine months ago.
Yeah, so this is 2019, or already budgeted for?
Yes.
Is that right?
Yes, so actually, so if my recollection serves me, the three projects would have been part of the fiscal year 2019 adopted budget in terms of our capital improvement plan.
Okay.
The work, they're able to begin and be underway. So, the expenditure dollars do exist. However, there will be debt issuance, so debt proceeds in the near future that would actually then fund it. So, the budget does exist.
So, you'll be bringing back a budget ordinance on, what's it called?
Not for these. The budget does exist, but we will, we will be bringing back to you information related to a debt issuance, probably early fall.
Okay.
Great. Any other questions? Let's just vote on these individually. Is there approval of the Arvenoy CMAR Preconstruction Agreement? Is there a motion?
So moved.
All right, there's a motion and second.
Yes.
Any members of the public who wish to comment? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Is there a motion to approve the SKA Engineered Design Contract? Anyone in the public who wishes to comment? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, and then finally, the 50 Cox Avenue item.
The 50 Cox Avenue renovation is to provide the Board of Elections a distribution center. Elections operations will be centralized into one location for warehousing and distribution to allow for more effective flow. Upgrades and renovation include HVAC and electrical upgrades. It will provide office space, roof replacement, exterior repairs, and interior wall panels. Bids were received, and the lowest responsive responsible bidder was H&amp;M Constructors. We have value engineered the project and have come to a final contract price of $818,700, which is well within the approved project budget. Construction will begin before the end of March and will take approximately eight months for completion. We ask that you approve this contract to continue the project.
So move.
Second.
Any members of the public who wish to comment on the motion? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you so much. Okay, and now we come to the resolution in support of a statewide initiative for legislative funding to reestablish a passenger rail connection for western North Carolina. And I'll ask Ray Rapp to talk to us a little bit more about what's happening with this effort.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And Commissioners, I have an exciting proposal, and I'm not asking for any money. So, if we can, if that lowers the temperature at all. But I've been working now with the Western North Carolina Rail Committee Incorporated, which was organized in 2017 after a conference on improving and expanding rail service in western North Carolina was held here in the Civic Center in downtown September of 2017. At that time, the Asheville Chamber of Commerce had a rail committee that had been in existence since 1999, and it had advocated over the years for reestablishing a passenger rail connection to western North Carolina. Had its ups and downs. There was great hue and cry in 1999, 2001. We had a study done by the Babcock School at Wake Forest University that said if we were to restore passenger rail service, we'd have roughly 72,000 riders a year. We were, we had good bipartisan cooperation. At the time, I was chairing a special House Select Committee on Improving and Expanding Rail Service in North Carolina. And we were working with then Congressman Charles Taylor to get funding to restore passenger rail to Asheville. Well, you may have heard about that 2004 flood that occurred in western North Carolina. And we had money set aside, which had to go to the $450 million for flood relief in western North Carolina that year. We got this proposal back on track, no pun intended. But you know what happened in 2008 and 2009 with the economic downturn, and the money that would have been allocated for this dried up. Well, while this was happening, just so you'll know, the city of Wilmington, as well as the Morehead City, worked out a separate contract with Amtrak to run Amtrak throughway bus service between Morehead City and Wilson on the main line. And the same with Wilmington. They developed their own contract for Amtrak throughway bus service to Wilson to connect with the main line in Wilson, and that has been phenomenally successful. They projected, by the way, ridership the first year from Wilmington at 2000. They were over 6,000 the first year, and that service has continued to grow. The last year or so, it's leveled off, so I don't want to misrepresent that at all. But it went, you know, it grew much faster than even the two cities had anticipated. And there was an agreement, while I was still chairing the Joint House/Senate Committee on Improving and Expanding Rail Service in North Carolina, that western North Carolina was next. Well, changes took place in administrations, and what I want to come to you today to tell you, working with Speaker Tim Moore and his staff, Dan Gurley, who is his chief policy advisor, John Torbett, who's Chair of the House Transportation Appropriations Committee and House Transportation Committee. We have a budget item that will be taken up next Tuesday, next Tuesday morning, to be exact, for $890,000 to subsidize Amtrak throughway bus service between Salisbury and Asheville for two years. So, roughly $400,000 a year, and there's $90,000 in there for the contracts and a consultant for the project. It'll be taken up next Tuesday, and what we're doing is asking for your endorsement, a resolution of support for this initiative so that we can restore and reestablish a passenger rail connection to Asheville, which we have not had since 1975. So, we are in a very unusual, I don't use the word unique, we're in an unusual position. We've got good bipartisan support within the legislature to make this happen. We have Amtrak coming to the table for the first time in 20 years to be open to this negotiation. And we have the support of the North Carolina Rail Division, which will manage the contract for the service. So, I would urge support of this resolution and would be glad to answer any questions that you might have about it. This is 20 years in the making, folks.
All right, thank you so much, Mr. Rapp. Any initial questions or comments from board?
Thank you, first of all, just for your leadership on this and the vision around it. It's hard to hold a vision for 20 years, so thank you for doing that. And it's really exciting to hear that the right alignment of forces may be there to help this move forward. Assuming this does move forward in the ways that you're hoping, and I plan to support this resolution, what kind of timetable might we be looking at?
We're looking to six, at most, 12 months before implementation of service. This would be a turnkey job. This is why this Amtrak negotiations has frankly dumbfounded me when we began, because they haven't been willing to talk to us. And now, they're talking about a turnkey job where they'll provide the buses, they'll provide the agents. Now, we have to agree as communities along the route that we will urge support of this and also put up some signage in the town, another community served by Amtrak, which would be on the outer perimeter. That would be our responsibility in the process. But it's very limited at this point, and the state rail division will handle most of the details on this. So, this is a truly rare opportunity, folks. And as somebody who's been in the trenches on this for almost 20 years, I can tell you, dealing with Amtrak is an unusual experience.
So, I've got a comment. We have, I won't say it's a policy, but we have not supported resolutions. However, this is totally different than the definition of, you know, what we were not doing in supporting resolutions. This is excellent, and it's economic development is different than a lot of things that come to us that, you know, fall over here that we just don't get in the middle of and get involved. This is totally different, and I like it. I intend to support it, so.
Yeah, I'm glad you made that point. You know, we've, I don't think it's written down anywhere. It's maybe more of an informal policy of not considering resolutions about issues that are of a statewide matter that are not unique to Buncombe County. Because there's a thousand issues out there that people have strong opinions about, but we want to focus our work on what's going on in Buncombe County. But this is pretty unique to basically Buncombe County, McDowell, the counties immediately around us. This is not a statewide issue, definitely a regional issue that's, I think, pertinent to us in a unique way. Any other comments?
I think this is really exciting. I'm already hearing some buzz from some folks in the rail industry about a north-to-south route, if this is successful. Are there any ideas in terms of what kind of impact this has on jobs?
Well, there was a study, and I would be, the Babcock School did this back in 2001. So, the data from that point would be obsolete, and that was based on actual train, not the throughway bus service. So, I'd be reticent to, there clearly will be the economic impact, but, and I would hate to use data that is that old and apply it today. I think the other, what that does raise, though, is this is a two-year trial. And Amtrak is going to look at the, look at the success of it. NCDOT's rail division the same way, and the legislature. So, it's going to have, and if you folks will join that, we'll have lots of eyes on this with suggestions of how we can keep it and improve it. And the one thing I didn't say, though, is some data that you should know. I mentioned the 72,000 that we projected ridership from the 2001 study. More recent studies were done by Amtrak. They, this past fall, projected a ridership of 2,100 riders per year. NCDOT went back to it and massaged those numbers and came up with a figure of 13,000 riders a year if this service were implemented. How did we get to the number asking the legislature for $800,000? Well, Amtrak lowballed us with a 2,100 number. And at first, I was a little bit distressed by that until they came up with, how much does the state have to subsidize this $400,000 a year based on 2,100 riders? And let's just split the difference between 2,100 and 13,000. My question back to Amtrak was, can that money from the fare box be used against that money which has to be guaranteed by the state? And the answer was, yes. So, I hope that the 13,000 figure is the right figure, but let's say it's not. Let's say it's half that, and we're still, that the state will not be encumbered by that full $800,000 for the two years. But we'll be looking at all these things, and again, I will use it. I was resistant. It's a unique opportunity after 20 years that we've got them at the table. We've got the rail division supporting us 100%. They have been wonderful to work with, and they are negotiating the formal contract with Amtrak. So, thank you for, well, any other questions? I'm sorry, Mr. Chair.
What happens after two years?
After two years, the parties will come together. The Legislative Oversight Committee will be measuring ridership and its impact. We'll be doing the same as the Western North Carolina Rail Committee, the rail division will. And of course, it's Amtrak bus service, and I can guarantee you, Amtrak will have their eyes all over this. They're looking for a feeder for their railroad. And if they see this, there's enough interest in this and enough folks that ride, I think they'll be even more flexible in their negotiations. But I think we're standing on the cusp of something good in terms of transportation for our region.
This is great. Was it successful in Morehead City?
It is very successful. Now, what I need to tell you, the original numbers exceeded the projections, wildly exceeded them. They've leveled off in the last two years, and I don't have the explanation for it. They haven't gone down. They've just, they climbed, and then they've reached a leveling point. A significant number of folks out of Morehead City, as you would expect, come from the marine base there. And they use it to get to the train. And, but Wilmington has been well pleased with it. And they're, you know, they're moving closer to what we would like for the long range for western North Carolina. They're moving closer to actual train service.
Oh, good, that's what I wanted.
This is step one to an actual dedicated train, which is what, by the way, the North Carolina DOT Rail Division is committed to if we can prove that there's enough interest and enough riders for this. So, that's what we're working for, toward, and this is step one in the process.
Chairman, I'll move approval.
Second.
All right, there's a motion and a second to approve the resolution. All right, there's a motion and a second to approve the resolution. Are there any members of the public who wish to comment on the motion? Mr. Rice?
I like the sound of that train going to Salisbury. That's where my family is down there. Anyway, I think the bigger question is, is safety. We've heard on the news, Mr. Rapp, that we, Amtrak has had some poor problems where the track was not centered in safety. And I think that should be paramount in asking safety first. So if they're going to designate this track, it needs to have the latest technology on it so it don't hit a freight train coming the other way. Because that's exactly what's happened here recently, if you've watched the news. And I think we need to really talk about that and make sure that that is paramount on the safety end of it. I think ridership would be great. Tourism in North Carolina, that's about what North Carolina is anymore, is tourism. You know, they're going to ride that train. And, and I don't mind riding it, but I want to be safe in doing it.
Thank you. All right, thank you. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, Mr. Rapp, thank you again so much to see you, so good to see you. And keep us posted on this. We look forward to hopefully this moving forward. And we'll be, we'll be very excited to see it evolve. All right?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So, come to board appointments. First, we have reappointment to Health and Human Services Board.
Chairman, the only comment I have on that, we don't have the employer and the years in the county. We normally have that on the sheet.
We typically don't put it for reappointments, but we can start doing that if we need to.
I would like that.
Okay.
She works for Mission HCA, right?
Oh, yeah, HCA.
Are they going to call it Mission? Are they going to keep calling it Mission? Does anybody know? Sounds like yes.
Chairman, just a suggestion, let's not get into that.
All right.
I'll, no, Sonia Grek, please.
Second?
All in favor of reappointing Sonia Grek, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, boards and, county boards and commissions, we still have a couple of open positions with Land of Sky and Crime Stoppers. We've been just kind of tracking that. Those are still open. You know, one item, which is, we don't have on this list yet, but we should put on the list, since the county and ABTEC have both approved the MOU, that does constitute the joint commission. So we do need to appoint two members there, but we don't have them on the list yet, so we won't.
Two members?
Two members from each group. ABTEC will appoint two, we'll appoint two, so.
You want a motion?
Well, you know, it's not on the list tonight. So I'd kind of, I was kind of thinking we might wait till the next meeting, but, because it's not listed here, so technically it's not on the agenda.
So can I give you two to think about so they can be thinking about it?
Let's just hold it off till the next, the next meeting.
I'll do it.
Yeah, all right.
I'm wondering who they are.
All right. All right, we just have a couple of announcements to make. On April 2nd at 5:00 PM, the county commissioners will hold the regular meeting at 200 College Street, room 326. And we'll also have, at noon, the same day, we'll have our pre-meeting on the first floor of 200 College Street. On April 16th, at noon, we'll have the county commissioner pre-meeting on the first floor of 200 College Street. And then 5:00 PM, the regular meeting on the third floor. April 19th, Buncombe County offices will be closed for Good Friday. I do not believe we have a need for a closed session. But before we adjourn, we will take public comment on anything you'd like to talk to the county about that we haven't previously had public comment on this evening. So is there anyone who would like to speak with the board this evening? Please come up. You've got three minutes to, it's an hour, our clock is an hour slow. So it's 6 o'clock, not 5 o'clock. So come on, come on up to the podium and let us know your name and where you live. And you have three minutes to, for public comment. Teri, hey. Great to see you.
Thank you, commissioners. I'm Teri Wells, and I live in the Sandy Mush community. And I'm here today to thank you for the support you've provided to our community with the internet funding. Many of you have heard from me before, and you know how important this is to our community. And so I actually came today with some other community members, because I'd like for you to hear from them and have a better understanding of how this is directly impacting us. And so one of those community members, I'd really hoped to be here, but she's working this evening. So I'm going to actually read her letter to you, so you'll, you know what I have to say. So I'll share with you what she has to say. And just so you know, this has surpassed even the need that I thought there was. Basically, over the past year, we have had around 1,000 users using that. And for our small Sandy Mush community, that's pretty amazing. And we're able to track that through the AT&amp;T, through the data that they provide, because they're able to look at that. So here is from one of our community members, Nancy Urick. She said, "I live in the Sandy Mush community and rely solely on the high-speed internet provided by our community center for both my education and my work. I am about halfway through an intensive year-long training to become a certified wellness counselor. Every Wednesday night, I go to the Sandy Mush Community Center in order to participate in a three-hour video conference call class. On top of that, my training also involves a great deal of research into a variety of health-related topics, which I conduct at the center. Already, I'm working as a wellness counselor with three members of our Sandy Mush community. If we did not have high-speed internet available locally, I may, I may not have been able to logistically pull off this vigorous program." As a, also, as a freelance graphic designer, who also maintains a number of different websites for clients, I rely heavily on the Sandy Mush Community Center internet to simply allow me to do my work. We cannot afford to have the satellite internet at our home because of the expense of it, and the satellite internet is extremely limited, both in reliability and in data needs in Sandy Mush. Also, my stepson, who is a ninth-grade student, must have high-speed internet for multiple school assignments throughout the week. We, we take him to the center at least three times a week to download information, videos, submit his written assignments, projects, et cetera. I honestly don't know what we would do if we did not have access to the internet at our community center. In summary, this is a serious issue. I know there are many of us who rely on the internet at the community center for our educational and work needs. And I certainly do appreciate that you have been supportive, and I hope that you will continue to be so. This service to our residents, who are outside the zone of any other viable option for decent internet. High-speed internet is not a privilege, but a basic human necessity in 2019. Thank you for listening to our request. Nancy Urick. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Diane Frisbee. I'm also from the Sandy Mush community. And both my husband and I work from our home. He runs our family farm business. And I'm also the art director for an advertising agency out of Atlanta, Georgia. So I telework using our internet connection. The, the internet is solely responsible for our livelihood. And we both came back to this area from being in, in the Atlanta region. And it's just an honor and a privilege to be able to live in the place that we love and to be able to make our careers through this connection. On more than one occasion, I've had to load up my very large work project files and take them to the Sandy Mush Community Center and use the high-speed internet there to transfer my files to my counterparts in Atlanta and to other clients around the country. So thank you to the board for your support in this, and we hope for continued support.
Good evening, and I'm very glad to be here. My name is Angela Whitney. I'm a nurse practitioner in palliative care, and I live in Sandy Mush for a long, long time. And I want to thank you so very much for offering us the hotspot that we have at the community center. I'm impressed to hear that 1,000 people have used it. And I know in our household, it's been very useful. My husband has an online education service as his business, and he frequently goes to the community center to be able to use that speed to, to upload and download the big data packages that he needs to. I've always been a big supporter of broadband internet. In our home, we're one of the few people lucky enough to have AT&amp;T service. But when people in Asheville hear how slow it is, they're shocked. Most of the new technology that's coming out can't work in it. We get less than three megabits per second, and we're grateful for it. I can't imagine the situation of people who have children and businesses who can't operate with that low, low speed. It's, it's Neanderthal, really, truthfully. And so I'm just so grateful that you all have supported us in Sandy Mush. And I want to mention that one of the things, we have 104-acre farm. We raise sheep, peacocks, fight off the coyotes. And we keep a really beautiful place, which is part of the draw of tourism in our, in our western North Carolina. If the farms weren't able to be strong economically, then we, they would be subdivided. And, you know, there'd be really impoverished dwellings and a lot of social services that would be required, a lot of social problems. And so the farmers create this beauty just for tourism, and it's a beautiful gift. So part of our farm's strength is my husband being able to use the Sandy Mush hotspot. But also, we have two long-term rentals, and we have one short-term rental. We do VRBO, Airbnb. And I brought some statistics for you. But this has an economic impact for our survival, but also for the county. We had 269 occupancy nights in 2018. And we paid $750.75 in county taxes. And we paid $875 in North Carolina sales tax, 2% of which comes back to us in North, in Buncombe County. So it's just, I urge you, please, to be creative and persistent in leaning on creating more viable, high-speed internet for us. We appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Rachel Brown, also from the Sandy Mush community. I want to echo what a couple of the other ladies have said about our kids using it for school purposes. Not sure how many of you have school-aged children, but they don't have classroom books anymore. Their textbooks are online, and they submit all of their homework online as well. We are privileged enough to have the luxury of satellite internet in our home. But as they were saying, that doesn't afford the speeds necessary for my kids to even turn in their homework assignments. Having that available helps the community for those folks that can't have satellite internet in their homes. It's, yeah, like they said, it's a necessity. There's a lot of kids out there that I don't know what they would do if they couldn't go to the community center and do their homework. So thank you. Please continue your support.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Public comment. You wanted public comment at each of your subcommittees. If it ain't worth putting in your minutes what the public is saying, then don't put public comment as something to go and talk about. It's not in your minutes, in your subcommittees. Because I checked. On March 5th, the sheriff come and made a presentation that some of the bodies asked him to come. He made a big presentation, but nobody got to comment about what he presented. I think if you're going to do it right, you should let us talk in the public about what's being presented, not have the sheriff on the top of the role where he is isolated from everybody else. His budget is no different than anyone else. We need to be speaking on it. The other thing, the sheriff brought up in a comment, not here, but in the public in Asheville, about ICE, ICE, and about what he was going to do. Let me tell you, commissioners, you need to get your hat on or off so you can get a little sunshine on your head. Whenever you start talking about what the sheriff has done by this ICE program that he is not going to cooperate with, you better think about the repercussions of the community and what's going to be coming into our community because of that. If the law of North Carolina legislators would pass what there's probably, I hope they will pass, he will have to abide by it. When it comes to the safety of our community, I don't care who it is standing, we need to be, be protecting them, that's for sure. But a sheriff should not have the liberty to do what he's doing. And you, you commissioners need to think about the safety of this. You just think about what's going to come into our community. I do appreciate the public piece that our commissioners are doing on the regular meeting pre-session. I think that's a good thing. But I think you're packing too much in one day, and you're saying you want public input at these meetings. Well, hey, listen, if I wasn't retired, do you think I could come to all these meetings and stay here for five hours today that I have in these committee meetings and your meetings? You need to think about who you're representing, not just your staff and you wanting to get home after a long day. So think about what I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, thank you, everyone, for joining us for the meeting. We're adjourned.